Thank you. Thank you. We do. Welcome, everybody. This is the Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, Town of Corder Madera Town Council meeting. With that, I will call the meeting to order. If we can get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Mongan?
Here.
Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Avasio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Here.
And Mayor Casissa?
Here. If we just stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we're going, the town council is going to be going in a special meeting. Before we do that, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comment. And the single topic we have is public employee performance evaluation. If there's anybody from the public, there's nobody here, by the way, in person from the public. If there's anybody on Zoom that would wish to speak on this topic against this topic only, please raise your hand. And while we're looking at that, did you get any email?
We do not have emailed public comments.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment and we're going to adjourn and go into a closed session. Thanks. Thank you. We're back in session. Coming out of the closed door session, Town Council, we gave Adam our interim town manager a positive evaluation. And this town council intends to consider offering Adam appointment has permanent city manager. At our next meeting, we're requesting our city attorney prepare a contract for council to approve again at our next meeting. And with that, we're back to a regular meeting. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to. Okay, so let me go do, do this. I'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting and I will go ahead and call to order our regular meeting of November 1st. And with that, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Mongan?
Here.
Councilmember Avasio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Here.
And Mayor Casissa?
Here. And if we can stand pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're back to public comment. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comment. Anybody that wishes to speak on a topic that is not on our agenda. If you're in person, please use the podium. And if you're in Zoom, if you can, please go ahead and raise your hand. And I don't see anybody standing or going to the podium. We have one hand raised. If you can bring Roy over, please.
Okay.
Good evening. I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. On September 27th, I addressed and had some concerns at the mayor's forum. And you had indicated that you and the town manager would circle back to me. So that's about five weeks ago. I suppose both you and the town manager have been circled up during that time. So I would hope that you get back to me on that issue because it is of grave importance that the town realize what that issue is about and address it properly. So, Mr. Mayor, when will you get back to me?
Thanks, Roy. This time again, it's just public comment. Does you have any other comments?
No, that's it. I just, would you please get back to me in the next couple of days? I did send you and Adam an email yesterday. And you haven't responded to that. So appreciate very much getting back. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Roy. I don't see any other hands raised. Do we have any email comments in?
Not have any emailed public comment.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We do not have any presentations tonight. We'll move to the consent calendar. These are items which have been discussed before and they're in the normal course of business. They can be approved by a single motion. Anyone from the town council, town staff or public may request that item removed for further discussion. With that in mind, is there anybody from the town council staff or the public that wishes to have an item on the consent counter removed for further discussion? There's nobody here in present. Don't see anybody from town council, nobody from staff, nobody with raised hands. Any emails come in?
No emailed public comment.
Thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment and we're looking, bringing it back to council for a motion to approve consent items for A through 4E.
I'll move.
Is there?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Going to call for the vote?
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casissa?
Yes. And with that, we're going to move to public hearings. No offense, I'm not going to read all this. It's way too long. We do have one public hearing tonight related to the building code and I will turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd just like to do an introduction here of the gentleman to my right. And I just want to extend my gratitude to both Thomas Arians, our interim building official, and Bob Brown, who has been pulled into this discussion, but has been really helping us with the climate action as our climate action coordinator. As you may be aware, and Chris Ragland, our building official, really was running point on this as building officials do point on this code update. And was working with his fellow colleagues throughout the county through the summer and spring. And I think as you're aware, he, this last day was at the end of September and we're very fortunate to have Thomas sort of jump in and help us complete the code adoption process or jump into this discussion. And so he's here tonight to discuss that aspect of the building code update and then also Bob Brown will will help us discuss the reach codes that are in front of you this evening as well. So with that, I will hand it over to Thomas.
Great. Mr. Mayor, council members, I have some brief introductory comments, then can hopefully field your questions. International Code Cycle, excuse me, the International Code Council publishes the international building codes every three years, which is used throughout the United States. These codes are updated every three years. The latest version was published in January 2022. The California Building Standards Commission, HCD, DSA, State Fire Marshal, OSHPOD, all review these model codes and then implement revisions applicable to California. And then republies them as the California Building Code Standards Codes. These California building codes would then become the default building code for every jurisdiction in the state on January 1st, 2023, whether or not individual towns or cities take any action. Once the California building codes are published, which happened July 1st of 2020, a local jurisdictions then have 180 days to amend those codes as needed based on local conditions. These, those proposed local changes and amendments are the content of the proposed ordinance being introduced here tonight. As a brief summary, most of the proposed amendments are administrative in nature and are being carried forward from the previous adoption, which we did three years ago. These administrative changes provide specific language for appeals and abatement actions and provide some clarifying language for types of construction which are exempt from permits. New to this cycle, staff is proposing some augmentation to the California Green Building Code in order to increase the requirements for the installation of electric vehicle charging facilities in all newly constructed residential and commercial buildings. Find those in section 1513. In addition, staff is proposing the adoption of a new chapter, 1525, which would require full electrification for all newly constructed residential and commercial buildings within the town. Details of these proposals are contained in the staff report and attachments. Those provisions were primarily drafted by Bob Brown, our interim climate action coordinator, who's joining us tonight, and he'll be able to answer any questions you have related to those reach code provisions. As a reminder, council will not be taking any action on the specific resolution tonight, but may discuss and or take public comment if they wish. The recommendation from staff is to simply introduce the ordinance instead of public hearing for November 15th. Should council direct staff to modify the ordinance, the adoption timetable would be adjusted as detailed in the staff report. This concludes my introductory comments. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Is anybody having questions? Go ahead, Eva.
Thank you. Just one clarifying question with regards to page, I don't know page numbers here, but on staff report, it says the model ordinance would exempt the following. This is for electrification of new construction and one of the exemptions is new ADUs that are attached or within existing mixed fuel residences. I was just curious, by within, do we mean on the property or do we mean within the confines of the home?
Yeah, that actually means within the existing building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I, I have one. Sorry, go ahead.
If I may, we were also going to have Bob sort of go into a little deeper dive on the reach codes itself, which will hopefully just elaborate on those.
Okay, so why don't we do a whole question? Sorry about that. I got a little premature there. Go ahead.
Okay, if I could have slides up. Got a few slides will hopefully help make sense of, of the of the reach code proposals. So within the suite of chapters in the building standards code, there are a couple that are proposed to be amended as part of these reach codes. One is the Green Building Code. And there will be proposed amendments to the EV charging infrastructure requirements in that portion of the code. And then also in the energy code, there would be proposed amendments that would increase the energy efficiency requirements for single family home remodels and additions. With amending the energy code, there's a requirement that the California Energy Commission approve that amendment. And there's a requirement that as part of that process, you submit a cost effectiveness study that shows that the additional improvements that are being required by the amendment are cost effective. In other words, they save more money than they originally cost over the life of the improvement. So the county has done those studies and they're available for all the jurisdictions then if they choose to implement those. And then an additional change would be the electrification requirement for all new buildings and that would actually occur outside of the building code. That would occur under your police powers for health and safety purposes. So I just wanted to point out the slight differences there. So the three proposed reach codes, then the first is an all electric requirement for new building construction. The second would be enhanced EV charging requirements as part of the Cal Green Code. And the third would be energy efficiency upgrades for single family homes over 750 square feet. And I would note that, as been pointed out earlier, your recently former building official, Chris Ragland, was involved in this collaborative countywide process. He was part of the, the technical advisory committee. And I would also just point out that the Climate Action Committee at their last meeting a week ago recommended your adoption of all three. And I will come back at the end with, with the proposed staff recommendation. So reasons why, there's really two reasons why these reach codes are being brought forward at this time. The first has to do with greenhouse gas emissions and about a third of the town's emissions occur in energy use in buildings. And as the energy mix in the, in the electrical grid becomes cleaner because of more renewables, that proportion of your emissions continues to go down. Right now, it's about 7% of the town's emissions. However, the burning of fossil fuels in buildings constitutes a greater proportion as time goes by and that right now is about a quarter of your emission. So the intent is to get out that, that 25%, 24% of your greenhouse gas emissions with the electrification requirement. The other reason is that the state will phase out sales of fossil fuel powered vehicles in, what, 12 years? And so the idea is to try to make ready our building, our buildings to have charging infrastructure in them. So those are the real, the real reasons behind these changes. So the first, the electrification, it would ban all new gas infrastructure and appliances in new buildings. But the exemptions, Councilmember Beckman asked about one. One would be the outdoor barbecues and heaters or propane. Those would not be precluded. Restaurants and commercial kitchens would be able to have gas fired appliances, which they tend to really enjoy. Backup generators for essential services, you know, police stations, fire stations, community centers, hospitals, and also multifamily buildings so that they'd be able to operate elevators and emergency lighting. Attached accessory dwelling units, again, already in a mixed use, mixed fuel building. So it would just be extending the gas infrastructure to that new ADU. Industrial uses that require industrial process heat. I don't know that you have any. You may have had one with wind cut, but that was in the past. And then there's also a hardship and feasibility waiver. And that would include affordable housing projects in case they can't make the affordability work with these requirements. These requirements have already been adopted in San Anselmo and Fairfax and many other cities in California, Petaluma recently, two years ago. And it's also being considered currently in Marin County. San Rafael will take this as you are to this, this evening, looking at this. Sausalito Mill Valley and Larsper also will consider this as part of this code adoption cycle. The EV charging infrastructure enhancements are a little more complicated to explain. Basically, for new single family and townhouses that have their own garages, it would bump up the requirement in the current code from an EV capable space where you just have, you know, the conduit without the wiring. It would actually make the requirement that it'd be an EV ready space. So the conduit has a circuit in it and has a breaker, 40 amp breaker in most cases. And then it has, just has a receptacle on the other end. So it doesn't have a charging facility yet, but it's ready. So that would be the requirement there. New multifamily would probably be the biggest change from the base code level. And the intent there is that all parking spaces for new multifamily would either have chargers installed in 15% of the spaces or the remainders of the spaces would be EV ready. And the state has made a distinction in this code cycle to allow low power level chargers. So instead of a 40 amp circuit, it would be a 20 amp circuit. So it still is a level two charger. It just charges more slowly. And in many cases, you can get that into an existing electrical panel without going up and having to upgrade the panel. There's also slightly different provisions for new hotels and motels. And then in non-residential, it's a sliding scale based upon the size of the number of spaces in the non-residential facility. And so I've got it on the screen here. And you can see as you have more and more spaces in the facility, the number of, of chargers goes up. That's in the far column and then also the number of EV capable spaces. So the rest of the spaces then at least have, you know, the conduit run for them. And then for additions and alterations, the requirement would only be triggered if a renovation project is upgrading the main electric service panel. And if that was being done for whatever other reason as part of the remodel, at that point, the installation would have to include an EV ready space. So you'd have to run the circuitry and have the, you know, receptacle end for future EV charger. And then for multifamily hotels and non-residential, again, if the project either upgrades the main service panel, then 20% of the spaces have to be EV ready. And in addition, if the parking lot is modified, if you're tearing up the asphalt and the curbs in a parking lot, at that point, you would have to run some conduit and make available spaces and for the exposed spaces and have a minimum number of chargers as well. But again, that only is triggered if you're tearing up the parking lot. And then the last requirements are really much more complicated and I'll just give you a high level summary. This would apply to single family additions or renovations that are doing, dealing with 750 square feet or more of the conditioned space in the building. And what the county has proposed is what's called a flexible pathways tool. So there would be a certain number of points you would have to get for the upgrade. And those points would be satisfied by doing, picking from a menu of potential efficiency measures, everything from changing out gas appliances to electric or improving the insulation in the home or sealing the home better, replacing windows, upgrading lighting. So you can pick from the menu and just get a certain number of points then. Again, if you are modifying a single family home over 750 square feet. And lastly is the staff recommendation. The staff has proposed that, and the ordinance that you have before you incorporates this, that the town would adopt the requirements that affect new construction only at this point. So the all electric requirement for new buildings and the enhanced EV infrastructure, again, for new construction only. And then would intend to address the code related to remodels in 2023. And that is consistent with the response that you sent to the grand jury last month. And I don't know if the town manager has anything more to add in terms of the staff recommendation, but if not, Thomas and I and the town manager will be happy to answer questions.
Let's bring back council. Any questions? Yeah, let's. Charles.
Bob, thank you for that. So the 7% mix for energy, you know, for gas emissions, is that based on PG&E reporting or MCE?
No, that's based upon your greenhouse gas inventory that was done, I think, a few months ago.
When you say like the inventory, so personal use within Corder Madera based on total usage?
It's all buildings within Corder Madera, public and governmental, yes.
Okay, all right. But not particular to some energy provider. It's.
No, no, that's, that's all the energy that is used. Again, those are all your greenhouse gases from all sources.
Okay. And then does the code get even more involved about the, if, if there is 100% provided, say, in new multifamily, how the metering would be done? Is it rented per, per spot or basically, you know? Because I, I think that if it's not addressed, I think that there's some really different kind of pricing models that might affect those multifamily housing. I'm just curious.
It's not addressed. There are options available now, for example, for apartments that, you know, don't have individual ownership of the spaces. There are now technologies where you can sign up, individual renters can sign up. And when they charge them, the billing can go directly to them. So again, it really is dependent upon the building owner as to how they want to structure the, you know, whether they pay for electricity or have the individual renters pay.
And then, so when you discuss the remodel, it talks about a 750 square foot remodel. Usually that triggers a single family home kind of understanding, but I was more curious about remodels for multifamily and when that flags, because I think that that will have a much greater impact. I think individual residents that have their own home can make a choice about the EV, but when you're renting to anyone within the public, I think providing those kinds of services, especially moving forward, I'd like to understand more and have the dialogue separated out in a way that I could understand that, if that possible.
I'm not entirely understanding. So the, the remodel requirements for a single family, the energy efficiency requirements would only apply to a single family. In terms of the remodel applicable to multifamily would only be the EV enhancements. So.
So if they go and remodel an entire new facility for multifamily, that would not trigger upgrades to all the.
Only if they upgrade the electric panel. So a major remodel is probably going to upgrade the electric panel. Then yes, that would be triggered. Or if they are adding new parking area or tearing up an existing parking area, they would have to put in conduit and, and some chargers in that case.
And that was at the county level that that was decided to be appropriate.
These reach codes were drafted by the county sustainability team, again, on a collaborative basis, but yes, they actually did the drafting.
And you know, it's just going to make the point, yeah, if they're, the remodel, let's say the multifamily housing project was being remodeled itself, I don't think the model ordinance is addressed that at all, but it's certainly something that the town could consider moving forward separately. And then my only other question is, you know, when I first bought my single family home, which I've now sold, but I did the California Energy Upgrades Program, right, which also had like funding mechanisms had that same list of things. Are those two tied now and ultimately could, as far as that cost savings, are they aligned in a way that could help homeowners basically achieve those goals and?
I don't know the extent that I would call them aligned, but there are rebates that are available through Bayren and through other state sources. So yes, there are rebates available particularly for the conversion of gas appliances to electric now.
Yeah, I mean, you know, back for, for that one, if you chose to do the seals and insulate and then got a better energy performance, you actually, it changed the amount of bonus that you got cash back.
I don't think that's still available, that program. But again, there are individual rebates now available for conversion of appliances from, from gas to electric.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You like a?
Yeah, thank you. First question I think is for you, Bob, for curiosity. So with the EV requirements at multifamily, they're, they're level two. Why is it that they're like slower chargers? Is it just because having that density of fast chargers would be too much of a load?
Yes, exactly. And it goes right back all the way to, you know, the potential transformer in the street. So yes, this is trying to reduce those, those maximum energy requirements. And there are also provisions for technology to be used. I've forgotten the, the name of the acronym.
Right, it's an automatic load management system, ALMS or something, I believe it's called, where during peak periods or if a whole lot of vehicles are being charged at once, the system can detect that and would automatically reduce the amount of power going to the individual chargers.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. And then second question, I think is a question for Adams. Can you give us kind of a sense of, I saw we were talking about looking at remodel and EV reach codes for 2023. Can you give us a sense, a little bit more refined sense of like timing and process that you're envisioning there? You know, I think like, like early to mid year would be awesome. Late year starts to feel like, you know, sort of spinning our wheels a bit.
Yeah, no, I think, I think really the timing, as you know, there's a couple of things on the staff side that I think need to be accounted for. One is Bob is going to be transitioning from being our interim climate action coordinator. We're going to bring on a new climate action coordinator and hopefully at the end of this month, which is exciting news. We are also currently obviously advertising for a, just recently for a building official, not to say, I mean, as you've heard, both of these individuals are experts in their field and that's, that's great that we have the resources for the time being. But sort of moving into 2023, what I think is really important is that we have our own staff be able to conduct outreach and discuss sort of the discussion we're having here tonight and even beyond in our community. And so I think having the time to do that, and I also noticed one of our planning commissioners here, I think touching base with the planning commission makes a lot of sense as well. Likely puts this in my mind more in the summer months of 2023 where we could, at that point, be positioned to either take what the county has provided as a next step for remodels or some other variable of that and bring that back for the council to consider some options with respect to remodels. Thank you.
I had one question that came about tied to what he asked.
So you mentioned at a certain point, the capacity of the overall facility needs upgrades outside of the main building. If you could understand what that number is, because my question is, is does that then become the multifamily or multi-use like developers responsibility or PG&Es, right? And the coordination of that. And so if that's addressed in the code.
Yeah, it does tend to fall on the developer. But again, it's completely dependent upon the size of the project. And, you know, exactly how much of an electric load, you know, how many bells and whistles they're putting into the building.
Right. And well, and so, but that's, so at some point, if basically you're updating the whole substation or some box, like, you know, to then basically be like, if you're doing 50 plus spaces, why not mandate that they be the higher level because we're all going to electric and you know, the turn on it would be better. I'm just curious like what the metrics on that would be because it seems like there's a good synergy or discussion about that. And not that I want you to answer it. I, I'm just asking the question. The answer is you haven't looked at it. So, you know, future questions to come. So.
Thanks. Before we, did you have questions?
No, thanks.
Okay, Adam, a question for you. There's Climate Action Committee is looking at. Climate Action Committee is looking at wanting us, their recommendation is to implement. Remodels now instead of waiting, I'll say till the summertime. Can you give the background on that and what staff's rationale is for waiting another six months plus or minus?
Yeah, I answer, I I think I answered some of that in response to uh Councilmember Beckman's um question, but you know, I do think. Some more uh outreach to our community regarding this issue, uh especially as it's going to affect potentially. Uh, people who are considering. Uh, remodels uh of their own single family homes in the in. In the future or already undergoing those um potential renovations. And so that's a big part of it. Um, I do also think, you know, part of. What we talked about in the response to the grand jury was moving together with other jurisdictions. And having a coordinated approach there. That remains to be seen. I know, again, Chris, when he was working with the other colleagues um and building officials. This recommendation that we're putting forth to the to the council right now is very, I think it's similar to most of the other jurisdictions in the in Marin. The the county notwithstanding. And so I think there's some additional work there um to do, and then I I do think there's technical aspects of the code. The frankly, um, while, and this comes down to um making sure, I'd love to get a. Building official on board who can help train our staff to ensure that. We are actually requiring the right information of applicants when they come in, if we're going to actually. Uh, enforce and and make sure that people are complying with new rules. This can get pretty complicated uh and technical, I think, as Bob, man, the point system itself is a little easy done, it's not so hard to understand, but actually. Ensuring that people are complying can get difficult, and I and I do think. Streamlining that as much as possible is is really important, so that takes some upfront, and I think some planning on staff side to make sure that. We are um have the, we're asking for the right information upfront, people know what to expect when they come into the process. Because the last thing we want to do is to hold up building permits or make, have people feel like they're being held up because we're asking for X, Y, and Z information. That may be specific to. Complying with any reach code that we are actually now um implementing or adopting. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Thomas.
There's some administrative details and policy decisions that also have to be worked out, for instance. You know, um, when you say seven hundred and fifty square feet of. Uh, altered space, how are we gonna determine what's altered space? The classic situation is. Like you have a bedroom, you replace, you add a closet and replace a window, you count the entire square footage of the bedroom or some portion thereof. Also, the time period, so if someone got three permits for an alteration here, an alteration here, an alteration here, is there. Are they cumulative or can they evade this, the the requirement based on the multiple permits? Uh, so 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 those sort of policy decisions have to be worked out, because honestly, that will be. The struggle that we have on a day-to-day basis with implementation. Additionally, there's this overarching fear that as we put more and more requirements on people, that increases the cost of their. Voluntary improvements that they're doing, that it does tend to promote permit avoidance, and that becomes an enforcement problem also, so. Um, yes, it's a delicate balance, but those things I think need to be vetted and we have to be prepared to deal with them.
Thanks. Do you know if any other towns or cities in Marin are looking at remodels or they've had? Are these just new constructions?
The only jurisdictions I know of that are looking at the uh the single family remodel portion of the code will be the county and I believe Fairfax.
Okay, but they haven't implemented anything yet, correct?
No, you're actually kind of out a little bit ahead of the pack right now.
Okay, and then just out of curiosity, if we did, if remodels, if that part of the code was enforced, say during two thousand and twenty-two. Do you know how many um permits that would have affected? Plus or minus, I won't hold you to the exact number.
It's um, it's it's difficult to say, because um we did, uh, we just ran a a little bit of analysis of. Additional square footage related to um how much, how many building permits were issued for. Single family homes that were adding at least seven hundred and fifty square feet, and that's not very many in the last year. I mean, it doesn't count how many are sort of maybe got their design review permits. Or in the last couple of years, but haven't just submitted for building permits, but it's maybe six or seven of those. What we didn't count and what we have to get a better handle on is the alteration question. And is that, and then you start to say, well, are we talking cumulative or whatnot, and that's probably mu- many more, because you could be adding, let's say. Three hundred square feet, a new bedroom, but you're also, as you're doing that, you're touching the interior of the house as well, and likely that would kick. You above seven fifty, we we didn't. Count that number of projects, but we have many more likely that are fall within that category. And then there's just the interior renovation projects as well. Um, so those. Um, as well, we didn't count, so it's hard to say, I I mean, if I had to take, if you're putting me on the spot, take a guess, I mean, maybe fifty to seventy-five.
That's kind of what Steph, uh.
Okay.
Okay, if I have this correct also, it sounds like it. Potentially, it's also burden on the applicant, right, because at this point in time, there's too many open questions, how to figure out square footage. And all that, correct? On the remodels.
From an administrative standpoint, yes, um, and the burden on the applicant, I think that was mentioned earlier, had to do with the potential infrastructure upgrade, so. Uh, getting down to the single family home even, um, if they have to upgrade their service from honored amp existing to two hundred amp. And the transformer that's on the pole out in front of their house is not sufficient, uh PG&E is going to help them. Have them engage in the cost of that upgrade. So it goes beyond just physical upgrades to the home.
It's al- it it's also, I mean, just making sure that we're getting the right information, and that can be sometimes the back and forth, right, I would imagine. As we have really clear direction on what we're. But, okay.
Thanks, and then just one other question, switching gears, do you know how many EV charging stations the town has on town-owned properties?
It's an RJ question, I I um.
I'll be, the only one I know about that's somewhat public is the one it's at City Hall that's under construction. Do you know if there's any others?
Well, we have. We have here over in our parking lot here, that is sort of, does it also serve their courtyard? Goes through the fence there, uh. So it's it's a, it's a couple, it's not many.
Just one quick comment, because I know we're not. I'm sorry, just funny ironic that we're going to be required EV charging. And but yet, we don't have a lot of them.
We are, yeah, and we are, we do have, we're just about, I think, in the building permit phase for two more, um, which would serve four vehicles at town hall. As part of the. Sort of the new town hall project as well, so there'll there'll be more at town hall, but.
Thanks, any other questions? Go ahead.
Just a quick question, um, have we thought about or or are we planning to think about ways to incentivize people to do some of these upgrades? Even if they don't do something that, you know, triggers a requirement, is that something that? We've thought about?
Well, I think, and that's where I think one of the real, um. There are a lot of incentives or rebates or financial incentives out there, and I think certainly one of the, I know we've talked with the Climate Action Committee about. Ways to sort of make sure that those are more better publicized in our community, so that those incentives. Um, are more readily available and can be tied to the project, maybe Bob, you can speak to that.
Yeah, the CIC is is currently discussing how to improve their website, and I think the idea would be to list some of these resources, and then again, is. In prep- in preparation for implementing an ordinance like this, you would definitely have handouts at at the counter, and those could also. List some of the financial resources that are out there, although they change constantly.
And so, so to follow up on that, the new um. Uh, coordinator we're gonna have, right, the uh, could that be one of the roles that they do in the permitting processes? Basically help uh identify rebate opportunities and and discuss through the planning process with applicants. Uh, all the available resources and help maximize.
Yeah, well, I think it's certainly to help. Provide that information more and make that information, make sure it's widely disseminated and available, so. Whether, you know, I don't see it handholding at the, perhaps, I mean, certainly, but I don't think there's, um, I mean. As I see it now, sort of like with the permit process, um, but. But hopefully that's taken care of, because we're already sort of. Uh, have those materials available and at the counter and the work of the Climate Action Coordinator can certainly supplement. Um, staff in that regard.
I should also mention, probably the biggest source of both rebate dollars and tax credits will be the new. Uh, Inflation Reduction Act from the feds, and we're still waiting for the criteria to come down, but that should be in the next few months, so. That should be a real chunk of 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 funding available for improving uh local buildings.
Sorry, keep thinking, I have one more for you. If um, just for example, if town center. Goes and rips up their parking lot for whatever reason to redo it, does that mean they would be required to put in the infrastructure for EV charging stations? And also put those charging stations in, and then how much would they have to rip up to qualify under that?
Well, any number of spaces that get ripped up, then there is a corresponding, you know, number of of chargers and conduit that have to go in. Um, again, it starts out very low, um, so yes, it depends upon the number of spaces that they would tear apart, um, and yes, I mean, I think. It's like five percent chargers, so again, it's not a real high number, but it is sort of an entry level number of charging facilities.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and close our question part out and open up for public comment. If you hear and wish to speak in person, please uh step to the podium. And we do have one hand raised, we have two hand raised now. Um, nobody at the podium. So go ahead and take, um.
We're gonna start with um David Johnson, who's the Chair of the Climate Action Committee.
And then you do have three minutes under public comment, thank you, and Rebecca or Lorena will start the timer. If you don't mind, let me do the the ones on Zoom first, and I'll get to you, thank you.
Um, David, you should be able to speak now.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for all that you do. This is what the transition to a low-carbon economy looks like. You're experiencing the opportunity, I hope you can follow through. And I'll say, isn't it great that the state law requires that these measures save taxpayers mu- money? And that that's already, that work has already been done. On October twenty-sixth, the Climate Action Committee discussed a a recommendation on the reach codes that was brought to the meeting by a. Policy Subcommittee. At the same meeting, we also heard from town staff about their their initial thinking, much of it in alignment with with what we heard here. There was one slide that Bob prepared for us that helped us understand how few applications. Um, these rules would change, how few they would actually affect. It was surprising how few that was. The number. Got elevated to tonight for some reason. At the conclusion of our discussion, we reached a a unanimous vote, and our recommendation is that. The Climate Action Committee recommends that the town of Corte Madera Town Council. Adopt the model breach codes as described by the County of Marin, and that these reach codes be integrated into the two thousand and twenty-two building code. Twenty-three update. In summary, our reasoning was that the reach, the building code is one of the few tools that can be used to affect climate change in this. Community. A adoption of these model codes will accelerate our ability to make meaningful reductions in emissions, a critical step at this time. Marin Clean Energy has affirmed that grid, that grid is able to handle this if these codes are adopted. And thirdly, this adoption would create a more simplified and unified approach across the entire county, and Corte Madera would be the lead. The county wants the local mun- municipalities to embrace these reach codes, so that entirety of the county and the twenty-two municipalities will be in sync. Um, I I uh provided a uh written copy of this statement as well, a- as and and it offered that. The um, the county worked four months prior to resourcing staff in September of twenty-one. Developed the reach codes. They they worked, um, there was open and public process for seven months. And and there was opportunities for the staff of Corte Madera and the other twelve mu- municipalities, not twenty-two. It um were able to be part of that process. The initiative has received broad notice in the press, including, if you remember, a large article of on the IG. On the front page above the fold, so this shouldn't be a surprise to people that this is coming down the pipe. The Subcommittee sees the reach code as timid in in many places. And it's, but it's a safe place for the town of Corte Madera to start. This is a step towards following through on the on the. The Declaration of the Climate Emergency.
I'm sorry, David, but you're limited.
I'm done.
Appreciate your comments.
Before we go to Roy, why don't we go to in-person public, and we'll flip over to Roy.
Okay, just make sure that green light turns on.
Hey, uh, Dan Kenny, resident of Corte Madera, and I just very shortly briefly, I wanted to speak in favor of this uh. Addition to the building code. Uh, I think it's a real opportunity for Corte Madera to be a leader. Uh, the state is clearly moving in this direction, requiring all higher education institutions to be carbon neutral. Uh, I think we have the opportunity to do the right thing in terms of climate change. Also, I think it's really important, particularly with the EV chargers and and multifamily developments, because those people really. Don't have the, many of them are not choosing to go EV because of the challenge of being able to find a charger uh that's suitable to them. So I think there's many aspects of the proposed uh additions to the building code uh relative to uh this. Uh, carbon neutral energy uh that I'd support and uh would love to see the council support it. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate your comments. Uh, if we can go to Roy and then David after that.
Roy, you should be able to speak now.
Good evening again. I'd like to hear tonight uh what the costs are for individuals. And then also upgrading the entire electrical grid, the infrastructure. We hear about, you know, all all these anecdotes and these wonderful things and and rebates and rebates. Ultimately are either tax dollars or higher cost in products, so this money just doesn't fall out of the sky. So I'd like to hear some real specifics. Now, I was listening to the Fairfax uh Town Council meeting. And a young couple got got up and addressed the council, and they said, hey, we bought a house, we're a young couple, we don't have a lot of money. Uh, and and we were going to just make the house livable. And then we got hit by the Cal Green. It was gonna cost us sixty thousand dollars. To fully electrify or electrification of our house, and we don't have that. What are we gonna do about that? So I'd like to hear from the council and the panel. What are you gonna do about the people that can't afford these upgrades? Okay, I heard all these provisions and stuff and rebates. But let's get some reality. I did some costing out of going a hundred percent electrification. Including two vehicles, EV vehicles. It was gonna cost somewhere up around a quarter of a million dollars. Now, if anybody there tonight wants to volunteer, open up their their bank accounts and pocketbooks and checkbook and donate. Hey, I'm all for it, I'll electrify tomorrow, okay? So we need to have some realistic cost of what this is going to be, otherwise it's just pie in the sky, blue sky. And it doesn't hit home as to what the real costs are gonna be, so remember, Fairfax has implemented uh that policy. Okay, so that's, at least that's what was talked about at a town council meeting uh about a month ago. So that's that's my comments. I hope I get some real answers tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy. And with that, if you can bring David over.
Uh, David, you can go ahead and.
Great, uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, Casusa and Councilmembers. I'm David Mahler, I live in Larkspur, and I'm representing the almost one hundred members of the Marin-Sonoma Building Electrification Squad tonight. Many of whom live in Corte Madera. We support adoption of the California two thousand and twenty-two uh building code updates and particularly support. The adoption of the all-electric for new construction and enhanced EV charging requirements. As you know, use of natural gas in buildings counts for about a quarter of all greenhouse gas emissions that are driving climate change. And lack of access to EV charging at home is a major barrier to EV adoption, especially for residents of of multi-unit dwellings. Adopting these reach codes will avoid having every new building and every new internal combustion engine car increase. Greenhouse gas emissions. These are achievable, common sense actions that align with Corte Madera's climate goals. And they're expected to reduce construction costs as well as operating costs. And as well as accelerating the adoption of electric vehicles. In taking this action, you'll be joining Fairfax and San Anselmo, which have already adopted all-electric for new construction ordinances. And the county, Mill Valley, Sausalito, and Sanerville, which are all poised to do so. We'd also like to urge that.
We'd also like to urge that Corder Madera take a good hard look at review and adoption of the requirements for existing residences that are doing major renovations. It's been brought up about the cost of doing this. It's not going to happen all at once. It's going to happen slowly over time. It may take decades to pull off, but if we don't get going on it, we're still going to be sitting here with the same greenhouse gas emissions two or three decades from now. Adoption of these reach codes will help Corder Madera meet its greenhouse gas production goals. And the all electric for new construction is particularly important for Corder Madera to get in place quickly with all the new residential construction that's coming our way. It will also help assure residents of multi-unit dwellings have the access to EV chargers and and implement that as well. Implementation of the all electric for new construction and EV charging reach codes won't require additional staff time compared to the California 2022 Building Code Update requirements. And Marin County will be preparing collateral materials to assist the jurisdictions with implementation of all three reach codes. So in conclusion, we really want to urge you to adopt the all electric for new construction and the enhanced EV charging requirements. And please move ahead with your review and adoption of the energy score approach for renovations. Thank you very much. Thanks. Appreciate your comments. I don't see any other hands raised. Do we have, do we have any email comments that came in?
I just refreshed my phone and it looks like we do not.
Okay, I'm sorry, we do have one more. Peter, it looks like Peter Schwartz just raised his hand.
Okay. Peter, you should be able to speak.
Good evening. This is a real challenging topic. I highly support the sentiment of the previous speakers about adopting this rich code. Serves multiple purposes to help those people who are major renovation and work on the electric panel to be able to implement EV charging in a cost effective manner rather than coming back later and spending extra money. However, having been on the planning commission for 10 years, I take the heart Adams comments about having the infrastructure on the administrative side to deal with these projects. So while supporting the technology adoption, I feel it's only clear that the admin side is capable of handling any traffic related to the reach code. So you can put me as technology supportive, but also supporting the town and making sure that of all their ducks and well records implemented. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Appreciate the comments. I don't see any hands raised. Is there anybody, any email comments?
We didn't have any email. Let me just check one more time.
Thanks. One of your, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak?
No email and public comments.
Okay, thanks.
Just make sure that the green light is on.
Hi, I'm Phil Simon, and I was born and raised here in Corder Madera. Although I'm a member of the Climate Action Committee and also serve on its policy subcommittee, I'm speaking here on my own behalf as a community member. I've been a general contractor most of my life and have designed and or built residential multifamily and commercial buildings. Those of us engaged in the construction business for a long time understand that the building code changes often. If we're proactive, we also know changes with respect to electrification of buildings are becoming the norm. If we're passive, we find out when we take out a permit. It's imperative that we not lose momentum. Our two-year-old climate action plan was adopted two years ago. Our climate action plan was adopted two years ago. It stated purpose to move us all toward increased action. I urge you to be proactive. With the exception of re-roofing and deck projects, please consider moving us forward toward action with this simple requirement. Accepting demonstrated hardship, accepting demonstrated hardship. All construction projects with existing gas service shall install a main electrical panel with a rating of no less than 225 amps. It's a day's work. And I urge you to consider waiving the $230 fee. We've waited long enough with reasons to wait. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else from public wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Town Council. I'm Jack Leaps, here residing at 17 Blue Rock Court. And I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words in favor of adopting all three reach codes. First, I want to thank the staff for their detailed review and their staff report on this issue. Especially the recommendation to adopt the new construction reach codes as staff notes, the number, however, of those newly constructed units will limit is is very small and will limit the efficacy and impact of the new ordinance. I won't repeat right now the details presented by the members of the Climate Action Committee. But I do want to emphasize that the town needs to act with more leadership in carrying out the goals of our adopted climate action plan. I understand you responded to the grand jury, but their words nevertheless ring true. Quote them, as the stakes grow higher with each passing year, the time has come for Marin to pursue an integrated and comprehensive countywide building electrification planning process, unquote. Adoption of these codes will help establish common standards for all of the towns and cities in the county and create a uniformity in the requirements that will benefit contractors and residents alike. Taking this action now has the strong support of your Climate Action Committee. I think it's unanimous support. Whose mission is to inspire the Corder Madera community and the town's leadership to achieve zero greenhouse gas emissions. That charge to inspire is important. It's precisely the inspirational action that is needed now, action that should not wait, action that the town council could take tonight. I urge you to adopt all three ordinances. That old saying is very true. If we're really going to think globally and act locally, this is the way to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I can add anything to what's already been said, but I'm going to try. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and and staff. Congratulations, Adam. And especially thank you to Bob, who has worked closely with the Climate Action Committee and did a great presentation tonight. Really appreciate it. My name is Leslie Alden. I've lived in Corder Madera for 40 years. I'm speaking on my own behalf this evening and not on behalf of the Climate Action Committee, although I am also on that policy subcommittee. And I've been actively involved with that group since Councilmember Beckman convened it several years back. And I'm very familiar with the policy proposed by the county in collaboration with with the other 11 cities and towns. And I'm also very familiar with what is being proposed tonight by staff. The county worked with staff from all 11 cities and towns for almost a year and a half to develop the set of reach codes that have been, you know, shared with you this evening. And and all of the towns and cities, I think, can and should adopt all three. I recognize and I appreciate that there's been significant turnover at town staff at the leadership level. And I appreciate that there's there's going to be staffing up and there's going to be training that needs to happen. And I'm also really thrilled that we're getting a climate action and adaptation coordinator. I think that's going to be a huge help for all of us. So this does seem like a significant decision, but it's not. In the complexity of getting our arms around how best to reduce the causes of climate change and the impacts, these reach codes are a very small piece of the puzzle. But they're an incredibly important piece of this puzzle that we're all trying to deal with. What the county has drafted in collaboration with main cities and towns and numerous public stakeholders is not perfect. It isn't even far reaching, to be honest, but it's an important step in bringing all of us together across jurisdictions in a collaborative way. And in in a way that is consistent across jurisdictions. I want to actually mention something to address staff's concern. I get that this is all new and 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 the community needs a lot of education. It's something that the Climate Action Committee can help with. But you, in the next budget process, could make some decisions about adding FTEs to that department to help support this outreach. So I know that Corder Madera has a potential to be a leader on this, not just in Marin, but across the region. So we actually really don't have time for anything less than that. I urge you to consider staff's recommendation as well as what else is in front of you and adopt all three this evening. But I want to close with a quote from the 2014 UN Climate Summit when Morgan Freeman intoned, "We need our leaders to be brave and their decisions to be bold." Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else from public wishing to speak? With that, any email come can come in last few minutes?
No new emailed public comments.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment before I open up the council for comments. Adam, do you or Bob, do you have any comments on the not issue, but with respect to costs that was brought up by one of the commenters? And also Vice Mayor Charles brought this up to me. I believe in one of the slides, there's something about hardship in there and I can't remember exactly where it was at. Can you just address those?
Sure. The the question about cost is, I mean, it was huge.
Yeah, I'm not looking at the power grid, by the way. I know that's way outside the scope of this.
I guess, yeah, I guess I would say that in terms of new building construction, there are both costs and savings. So you save on the front end, not having to put in all the gas infrastructure. There are then probably some additional costs because some of the electric appliances are a bit more than the gas, the heat pump units and that sort of thing. But then again, there are are savings and operational costs over the life of those improvements. So again, it's it's kind of a wash. I will say that from, you know, a a practical standpoint, there are many developers, multifamily developers that are going all electric by choice, not because of mandates. And we've had focus groups, the county did as part of this collaborative process, and I'm on the board of a of a affordable housing developer. And their point of view is that really there, it's sort of a wash cost wise for them in terms of electric or mixed fuel.
That's new.
New construction. On the remodels, again, it's very variable depending upon what is being done in the home and what proportion of additional costs. So yes, you might have to, as part of your remodel, replace a gas water heater with an electric. And that process probably does entail a few thousand dollars of of upgrade, both for the appliance and possibly for the electrical panel. But again, it's really hard to say with any specificity because it depends on what your total project is.
Right. And during hardships, I thought again, when the slides, there's something about hardship.
Yes, there is a hardship waiver and hardship and an infusibility waiver. The hardship waiver is particularly geared towards affordable housing developments if they can't make the affordability work for them.
Thanks. Charles, you have a question?
I just have a quick question to follow up about. So and and we're not approving it tonight, but in the remodel, if we do basically pull all the gas appliances and there's no need for a gas at a residence anymore, what does that imply for the gas meter and the hookup at that residence moving forward? Are we going to require that they be removed or do they just basically abandon in place?
No, that's not the case. For the single family remodels, they're required to do some electrification or or other energy efficiency improvements. They're not required to terminate the gas service.
Right. But in in, yeah, in the case that they actually do do that, like, because we're really talking about phasing out gas everywhere, right? In town eventually, whether it takes 30 years is, I think, what I heard, right? Like, is there, what is PG&E's policy? I guess I'd like to find, no.
I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
If you abandoned the gas building, where do you have to?
Okay, so they would terminate that connection in the street typically.
Right. And that would be PG&E or would the individual homeowner be required to do that? Because to me, it's like a sewer lateral, just in a bigger policy issue at the council level. That's the type of thing that we deal with. So.
Right. PG&E would do the work. They would build a homeowner.
All right.
Thanks. With with that, we'll go ahead and bring back town. So.
You just talked about a water heater. But potentially, if somebody had a gas stove, a gas heater and a gas water, they would have to replace all of them dryer?
No. Again, the the single family remodels, it's a point based system. And so you have to pick enough measures to meet the points and the the point values are such that in a typical remodel, you're probably having to pick one gas appliance that you have to replace to electric and maybe do some lighting upgrades or somewhat or those sorts of things. But again, it's not full electrification of a home by any means or a remodel.
Yeah, it's a real, it's a question. Okay, so I had one more question to follow up because the the topic of the MCE came up in this letter in particular, as though that was the only source of energy within the the county. And I it is it mandatory now or is it still an opt-in program for MCE clean energy?
If for the individual property owner, it's still opt-in, yes.
Okay, so and then for multifamily or commercial, is it also opt-in?
Yes.
Okay, so then I guess I would like policy made on the total options in which a developer from, say, Las Vegas that doesn't care to opt in will be could choose to do it and what the impacts would be so that we can really get an understanding because they might not all buy into the environmental MCE green energy program. And I need to understand that the policy that we're implementing is based on the base level, not the like, we've all bought in and 80% of our county is green, you know, group of people that are basically advising. I mean, I think that that's important for me to understand and for the whole community to understand that it's it it's not mandated and it's, you know, there's two different energy sources that they're putting in and that we're paying for if we choose to opt out. So the question is, new build, can you basically mandate MCE compliance to basically meet a tier one? I would like to know the answer to that. If we're going to talk about it like that until that point, please give me all the options. Because I it started as a question, but I realized you couldn't answer it. So.
That's a legal question. Yeah, we have to research that.
Which Amy's looking the other way. But that will go ahead and bring back counsel. We're not taking any action tonight or adopting. What we're looking for is providing staff.
I believe we do have to do a vote to introduce the ordinance and set the public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. So with that, we'll bring back to council. Eli, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Fred. First of all, thanks. Thank you, staff and Climate Action Committee and everybody who worked really hard on on what's before us tonight. And thank you to everybody who gave excellent comments tonight. That was super helpful to hear. So we've got obviously three reach codes in front of us tonight, new construction, remodels and EVs. The staff recommendation is to adopt new construction right now and then work in the coming months on remodels and EVs. Totally agree on adopting new construction ASAP. I, you know, I think that's the bare minimum. On renovations and EVs, I really think we need to to move quickly on that. I think times of the essence. And here's why, right, is we're doing this to solve a problem, to address a problem, and that problem is the climate emergency that we ourselves have recognized. You know, and so I I think a lot of the sort of like historical arguments that we've heard about why this is not a feasible step, I think are are have really sort of been addressed, right? MCE, as we heard, has has affirms grid reliability. I think Charles' question was maybe whether PG&E can also affirm that. Was that kind of?
That, right. MCE doesn't own the lines or the total power generation. It's only MCE can provide that much. They can basically buy a chunk of green energy, which isn't really saying that basically the I want to see the truth. I want it to actually work. I don't want to move it forward with the idea that it's going to go brown out on us because we don't have enough hydroelectric power because the climate adaptation, you know, isn't enough and we ran out of hydropower, right?
Yeah. Okay.
I want, I don't, I'm not totally convinced. So.
Okay. Still though, right, I think I think the fact that MCE is affirming that that their systems can handle that is is a good sign. And and, you know, I I think that's important to take into account. I think, right, we're not the only Marin city to be looking at this or doing at the doing this right now. So we're not talking about like going first and doing something unprecedented. Again, like I think when we talk about like adopting Again, like I think when we talk about like adopting, um you know, regulations like this at at the town level, one thing that we like to look for is. Has the county already taken care of it at a countywide level? And then the cities typically in Marin County follow suit. That's done here in this situation. So I feel like a lot of times that's something that we look for uh to check off and make sure that we've got kind of a path forward, got a lot of that work. Done for us. That is done here. Um so you know, I I think that's important. Uh the county did, you know, a lot of public outreach. Um you know, through their process, obviously, the the outreach that the county has done is not a substitute for doing corredumadera specific outreach between the town. And our residents, I think that absolutely has to happen. I understand and agree with with staff's comments there. Um I also think, you know, the fact that we've got these reasonable exceptions in here, like we talked about, there's flexibility for homeowners through this point system, right? So it's not, even though we're saying electrification electrification kind of as a catchall, it's not a, hey, you gotta just rip out all your gas appliances right now. You know, and and replace everything. It's a, hey, if you really need your gas range or whatever, you can do that. You just gotta like, you know, use a better insulated window or something like that. So there's this point system that I think allows that flexibility for homeowners that I think is really important. And when you couple that. Uh with the exceptions for hardship and things like that, I think that addresses some some major concerns there. And then I think, you know, frankly, from my perspective, I think kind of the elephant in the room is is the unanimous recommendation uh from the Climate Action Committee. I think that's a that's a legit bona fide advisory body that we set up, you know, for for a great purpose to address a serious problem that we have in town. I'm hard pressed to to envision a situation in which the town council would cast aside a unanimous vote from the planning commission or BPAC. Uh you know, or or uh you know, uh some of our other committees. So my all this is to say, uh you know, I understand. You know, that that we may not be ready tonight based on the outreach that we've done to adopt uh the reach codes with regards to renovations and EVs. Uh but I'd love to see us really move aggressively on that. Really, you know, I'd love to see us start that outreach ASAP. Um. You know, I I would be happy to give that that direction to staff if if the council agrees to really get moving on those quickly. Yes, let's start with new construction tonight, the one, uh but let's definitely get moving, you know, promptly on on those other two reach codes. Um you know, I I feel like the the comments that we've heard from, you know, from residents and from the committee, I think are are uh. You know, they're they're just really salient points and I I completely agree with what we've heard. Um so that would be, you know, my two cents. I I love to say, yes, let let's go ahead and. New construction, start that process tonight as recommended, but let's also, you know, I would suggest, let's recommend to staff that we begin the process ASAP. Uh to develop, you know, and adopt to reach codes for new construction and EVs.
Thanks. One question before we go to um other comments. Can you move up the timeline from summer? It really, I mean, I I want you to be realistic because I don't want us to over promise and under deliver.
No, I think I gave you my best.
You know, uh we can all sit here saying, hey, we want this done quicker. But in my mind, what does quicker look like? Do you know what I mean? So is it possible to move it up? Instead just summer, but it's still gonna be the same thing in the work plan. There's gonna be a time.
Yeah, I think I gave you my best sort of. I think we can do it by the summer. My I I moving it up, uh especially um given our current staff situation, I think it's just not. A a doable proposition, so I would.
If if you had to bring in another consultant or use. Him use Bob after you bring in the client. No, I'm just asking the question.
He said no.
No.
I'm not, we're not going to expect now.
No, I'm just wondering what that moves up the timetable.
N- n- no, it's it's really not. Thank. It's not about that. I don't think it moves it up. I think there's some thoughtful. Discussions we need to have as staff internally, we need to sort of deliver um good thorough outreach as we do with many of our other po- policies to. Our community, um uh you know, and make sure that it's well understood and that we're prepared to sort of roll it out. Um when we at the at the time, um when uh the council, if they decide to adopt this. Um a a reach code for remodels, so.
Alright, thanks. Eli has the screen.
I I just want to say, I I i- i- if you think we can move it by summer, that's fantastic. That works for me. I just, what I don't want to see is it kind of slip to like, you know, fall and then winter. And then, you know, next January or something like that. Um and I I again, I realize that you've got a lot going on right now. You've got staffing positions you need to fill in order to have the. Infrastructure there to develop this, totally get that. Um and and I realize that you are already, you know, looking to put the pedal to the metal on this, which I really appreciate. I just wanted to reiterate from my standpoint as a council member that that, you know, getting this, getting this done, uh you know, on as aggressive a timeframe as is realistically possible. Meeting our obligations with regards to public outreach, uh you know, and and thoughtful development of policy uh is is a priority for me. So, thank you.
Thanks. We can go this way. Um Leela or Bob?
Go, yeah. So if I understand you correctly, then you're saying you agree with the staff recommendation?
Yes, with.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I wanted to clarify because when you started and I thought you were going somewhere completely different, so.
No, I'm just saying, let's let's move, move, move on the other two.
Okay, you said move quickly. Okay. Just wanted to clarify, make sure I understood. Um I agree with it. So I I completely agree with that. Uh we should absolutely move forward with this. But we need to really make sure we get the whole thing with renovation done correctly. And we need to get public input. This is gonna be a big deal to a lot of people because. They haven't heard about it yet. When they hear about it, they're gonna have a lot of questions. They're gonna have a lot of input. We already, for example, are requiring several adables on major, that's fifteen thousand dollars out the door. This is gonna be additional cost out the door, so. We need to get public input and make sure we do it correctly. We need to do it quickly and make sure we get it done right. So I agree. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Lea?
I agree with what's been said. I want to thank staff and the comments that we heard. Um that was all really helpful and I agree that there's uh some urgency to move here. Um but I take staff at their word uh about what is feasible and um agree with what's been recommended.
Yeah, uh both the new uh new reach codes are totally acceptable in their current form. But as I continue to do, I do believe that the remodel and the understanding of the current infrastructure and how to update that. Through time needs greater discussion within fiscal responsible kind of guidelines for for residents. Um because there's a lot of fixed income people and other other sources that I think you need to respect. Uh you know, and ultimately, I don't feel like a a fixed income person in corredumadera is gonna save the environment. I think that uh you know, enforcing in China uh not using coal is gonna save the environment. So keep in mind, while we all want to do our best at the local level, it might not be the possibility of the local level to save the world. Um but we can all try and that's the reality of it. So I don't want to impose and inspire a fiscally inappropriate uh mandate on a local resident. Uh because I think that it's gonna stop the polar caps from melting. I just, you know, and that's just how I feel, so. You know, and uh yeah, so I can and the all the other building codes, I mean, that's, let's just move forward with them. But let's have a really good discussion. I think it needs more discussion. I even saw a discussion happening over here about certain things that got brought up. So it it doesn't make me feel confident that we could just say, okay, because it's really hard once you implement it. And people really start getting affected by it and it wasn't appropriate. So um I'd just like to see that. And I think that in any bureaucracy, it takes time to get the word out and do it right. And I've seen Adam do that with the housing element and I feel much more comfortable with his timelines and. Um and his ability to really bring in stakeholders that matter and influence the outcomes for more positive. Finalization of it, so I would recommend that as well.
Charles just ticked off something else for me about renovations. Um one of the points I would, I see a lot of houses in my day job. Most of the houses out there have gas water heaters, gas stoves and gas forced air heat. So if they're doing renovations, they're gonna be requiring changes. So you're absolutely right. We need to make sure we get this right and I also, you're absolutely right. Adam knows how long this stuff takes. He's shown how he did it on the housing element and we should take his recommendation. So thank you.
Thanks, and I I go ahead.
There's small things since I think Lea brought it up and also I think uh Phil brought it up, which is the idea of incentives, right? Or or like waiving permit fees or at least reducing permit fees. I'd love to see us look a little more closely at at where we can do that. Obviously, at the end of the day, that's a budget question, right? Um but I think that's potentially a really powerful way to to add a carrot and have, uh you know, have these types of of important issues be not just all stick. Um so just wanted to to second that notion. Thank you, Lea, for bringing that up and thank you, Phil.
And just to dovetail off that, I think similar to what we do with the sewer laterals, where I think we have like a grand program. In next year's twenty two, twenty three budget, we should look at allocating money towards the same type thing if we can. So think of it, think about it that way. Instead of trying to do a piecemeal, we could just allocate money. Um and I agree with what everybody else is saying. I think we have a real positive here. I don't want to turn the positive into a negative. By approving uh remodels tonight and all of a sudden there's a negative whiplash from the community. I just think we have a great positive. Let's keep that momentum going. I will hold staff, though, to the five feet to the fire to make sure that this gets done by summer. And summer, by the way, is for me, it's like, you know, latest is August. It's not September, even though some people still take vacation in September. So I'm not putting an exact date on it, but I just want to get that out there that we keep this moving. And we've been talking about remodels. What are EVs in the same tone summertime also? I just want to make sure we're clear on that because I know we've been talking remodels mostly.
Now, I think that's a fair question. Um. Yeah, I I I would think they would go hand in hand. We'd probably discuss them similarly. I'm only hesitating just because. Um I'm not familiar enough with the EV remodel codes to see how it might affect our business community and that's sort of a separate. Track in in my mind in terms of making sure that we're communicating with with our businesses, community and and property owners and. So but I, yeah, I think we would be discussing them at the same time. I and so again, maybe Bobby, you have some more.
Just to clarify, but the ordinance that the draft you have in front of you for introduction uh does have the EV requirements for new construction embedded in it. Okay, okay, I thank you.
Yeah, but just there's also additional in the county model code, additional requirements for. Sort of uh EV requirements if you're remodeling your existing commercial structure or residential structure as well.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other comments? So with that, then we're looking for a motion. I'm gonna make this simple without reading the whole thing. To introduce the proposed ordinance as recommended by staff.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Thanks. Is there any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Cissa.
Yes, and thanks. I appreciate all the work staff, Bob, Thomas, you've done and I'll say you guys from the um Climate Action Committee. And I know we're gonna be seeing a lot more of you in the coming months, years and days. No, it's it's all good, positive work. It really is. We really appreciate your work. Thanks. Okay, with that, we're gonna move to um. Six B, which in conjunction of another ordinance and it's related, I'm just gonna sum this up to um uh wildland urban interface code.
Give us a second while we do.
I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Martin. Also, Chris.
Um thank you, uh Mayor Cissa, members of council. Um we're here today to um introduce the. Fire code for twenty twenty two. Um what I like to do before we get started is introduce uh the gentleman here to my right is Chris Jewell. Who's our fire inspector here for Central Marin Fire Authority. You've may have seen him out and about. He's been with us for about a year, so um. Part of the process today, this is his first code cycle, so it's kind of uh our organization to try to build depth. And get people prepared for the future. So with that, um we'll go ahead and get started. Um so we're here today to introduce and propose ordinance uh adopting the twenty twenty two California Fire Code. Prescribing regulations governing conditions hazardous to life or property and fire explosion. Providing for issuance of permits for hazardous uses, operations and establishments of the Fire Prevention Bureau, the Central Marin Fire Authority. Um as uh mentioned earlier by our building official, um. The California Fire Code is part of the triennial cycle that is part of Title twenty four, so there's twelve parts of that cycle. Or excuse me, of that code, and this is part nine. Every three years, the California or the International Fire Code is published by the International Code Council. Which is basically your model code where all your codes are then developed. Um the California Building Standards Commission, along with the State Fire Marshal's Office, then looks at the model codes. Um and then makes any kind of amendments needed that are based on California needs. Um and that was published in July of twenty twenty two. And then it's given to the local municipalities to then have a hundred and eighty days to then make any additional amendments that are based on local findings. And then adopted within those hundred and eighty days. Um in July of twenty twenty two, all the fire prevention officers within the county. Um that represent all the fire agencies within the county as well, got together and met weekly and went over um the existing fire code. And the international fire code that was presented and then we reviewed it uh based on our existing ordinance that existed within. All of our municipalities that were adopted in twenty nineteen. And so together collaboratively, we worked in trying to. Make the fire code as consistent as we possibly can within every municipality across the county. Um understanding that. The dangers that say may reside in Nevada were the same ones that we deal with here within corredumadera. With that, um the language within the fire code is pretty much for the most part the same language that was in the twenty nineteen code that was adopted by uh. Your council. Some of the changes that were made um within the twenty twenty two cycle that are fairly different than the twenty nineteen cycle. Is the California State Fire Marshal really um emphasized on chapter forty nine of the California Fire Code. Which expanded um vegetation management within the wildland urban interface. And that was a, as a result of the twenty seventeen fires and then the fire sieges that then happened throughout the state of California. Um after twenty seventeen up to this date. Um so what we went through was chapter forty nine and then made sure that it aligned with our current existing defensible space standards. And made sure that um we were all in alignment with the rest of the county. So that way our homeowners, when they talk to each other. Um because they all have friends in different places of the county, they can know that it's being enforced equally throughout the county. Um another section um that we realized that when we started going through the code cycle is any new um either systems. Um processes that happen throughout the state that we see that may become an issue, that then we could try to relate it and um. Govern it within the fire code. One example was what we were starting to see, especially after the twenty seventeen fires. Is the implementation of exterior fire protection systems. So for example, homeowners or even contractors out in the world were. Then soliciting homeowners to put up basically your lawn style landscaping uh irrigation onto your roofs. And try to sell it as a fire protection system to try to prevent your home from burning down. Um some of the issues that we have seen with that is uh they're unregulated. Um there aren't built to any standard. They're not being inspected. We don't know where they're at. And are they being installed in homes that already have existing fire protection systems, for example, interior fire sprinklers? Where now the exterior system can compromise the effectiveness of the interior system. Because it's not hydraulically calculated within what the water supply can demand. The other thing that we looked at with exterior fire protection systems was how do we protect our current fires or fire suppression water system? Within the municipal water sources of uh MMWD. Because if you can imagine, every homeowner, when they get told to evacuate, has these systems, can turn it on. And then be evacuated for up to a week and then have these systems deliver up to twenty five gallons a minute, nonstop. For weeks before a fire front comes. And so you can imagine when the fire front comes and when we need it as fire suppression capabilities. Now your entire municipal system has been drained. And so what we're trying to do is within the fire code is identify it. And at least someone who's installing it can provide plans to us to show what they're installing, what the protection level is, what the gallons per minute is. And then that way we can start keeping an internal inventory of where those properties are. So in the event that an evacuation happens, we can then monitor if these systems are then deluding the hillside at. At a enormous amount of rate. Um with that, um I believe that's the end of my report and I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council members? Yeah, Eli, go ahead.
Thanks, Reuben. Just one question to clarify. So you said with these external suppression systems, you're not requiring them, you're not banning them, you're just gathering information on them?
Correct. What we're asking is uh for them to submit and apply for a fire operational use permit. So basically, it's somewhat like an interior sprinkler system. We'll review the plans. As fire um professionals throughout the county, we realize that there's a effectiveness to these systems. We just want to know that they're being installed correctly and want to know where they're at. And we've even talked about fire within ourselves about waiving any kind of permit fees for that. If they're going in, we just want them in correctly.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
So do these installers require a business license to conduct business within uh corredumadera? And do we have a business license checking mechanism in which we could certify whether it had been properly installed by. A uh licensed business entity?
Um so yes, I believe the town does have a business license, a mechanism of collecting that. And the intent for us is anytime there's an outside vendor that comes in, we always make sure that they hold a business license to be able to do work in town.
All right, if they're done without a business license. All right, uh, if they're done without a business license by an unlicensed professional, ultimately, is that not a ban? But what's the consequence of doing unlicensed work of that type?
So typically, if it's a contract, licensed contractor, they can, their license can then get um, submitted to the contractor's licensing board.
Right.
As for them doing work without a permit. However, what we look at is a homeowner could potentially put in a lawn sprinkler system. And it's unregulated. And no one regulates that.
So do you, would would you recommend doing some kind of um, educational uh, pamphlet thing to to the. To the neighborhoods that might be trying to implement that to understand the consequences of doing it unpermitted?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's a part of our getting this into the code was to do first get it codified and then do the public outreach of what's out there. Because what we've seen with a few of the companies that are out there is they're targeting some of our elderly community members because they said they seem to. Feel that they're the most vulnerable, similar like you would see during um, fraud phone calls. Where they target our elderly community members, because that's where you start seeing is our vulnerable community members are the ones that are the most fearful. Of losing their homes and losing their lives, so to speak. And so that's who they tend to be targeting.
Thank you, Ruben.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Without going to open up for public comment, if you wish to speak, please go to the podium. And right now, there's no way going to the podium. I don't see any hands raised. Any email comments come in on this?
Uh, we do not have any email public comments.
Thank you. Um, so with that, I'll go and close public comment and bring back to town council for comments and or a possible motion to approve. The uh, I'm gonna keep this one simple also, um, approving introduction, the ordinance has um, stated by the fire chief.
I'll move that we introduce the ordinance.
Second.
Thanks. Any other further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Uh, councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casissa.
Uh, yes, thanks, Ruben. Appreciate it. Really quick, while you're here, any update? We had rain today. Any update on fire situation?
Um, our ignition component basically means anytime you can have a spot fire with embers was zero, which is good, which is good for us, so I. Typically for us to call fire season traditionally is about two inches of rain. Of continuous rain. I think, I'm not sure how much we got today, whether it was a quarter or half inch. So if we can get a couple more days of rain, uh, it'll definitely make me sleep a little better at night.
Alright, thanks, appreciate it. And with that, we don't have any other business items. We'll come to council and town managers' report. Uh, Adam, you're up.
I just wanted to mention that we we did get a uh, a few comments earlier today. Um, from community members on Grove Avenue who were concerned about the. Sort of the condition of the road on Grove now that sewer work is underway. And so I just. RJ had a great response to residents and so, um, there are, um, really. Focusing on, you know, the why the work was being done in the first place and most of the residents who we heard from were. Um, very supportive of the work being done, knowing that that sewer line needed some, um. Major renovations there, so and rebuilt reconstruction, so, um, but. We do our best and and RJ confirmed, you know, we're doing our best to sort of make sure that we do, when we do infrastructure work like that, we're coming back and trying to have. Roads redone, um, just to note that you may hear about this and. The the road has not been, uh, well, work's still underway, so the road has not been repaired to its standard. That will be required by public works at the end of the day. Uh, and um, also we can consider sort of that road and for repaving in the future CIPs, it's not scheduled to the, at this time. But certainly that was just a one, a case where, you know, the priority of improving the infrastructure of the sanitary district there was. Elevated above me, ensuring that we had a pavement plan in 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 place to repave that road. So just wanted to mention that. Um, other than that, uh. Now I don't have any uh, further reports. I will be uh, attending the Bay Cities, um. Conference on Friday and Saturday this week, uh, along with actually Chief Martin. I'll see you there. Um, just to get familiar with the risk pool and our colleagues, uh, there, so that will be a great, a good experience for me, um. And uh, yeah, look forward to our next council meeting where we can talk. About, uh. The uh, appointment and contract, so thank you very much for that news. That was exciting.
Thanks. Any questions for Adam? Okay, I'll bring you back to council for for um, council report, Eli.
Bob, Nava, Lila?
Nothing.
Charles?
I attended the TAM uh, meeting, um. The, a lot of what was discussed, uh, that pertained to the town, uh, was how they were rethinking the measure B funds and distribution. And um, the group of, uh, including RJ did a negotiated uh, revision to to basically the proposals from TAM. And found a compromise that we approved. Um, another ongoing uh, liability for TAM uh, on all projects is the current SB three uh, challenge in the courts is. I think it's SB, it's it's um, the measure that basically brought money from the bridge tolls has been challenged for many years. And it's still accumulating, um, and multiplying, but we know none of the projects have had access to it. So they found other means of of funding, which were only a stopgap until that came due and. Those projects, it's been years now and past the anticipated delay, so that um, that could become an issue. Um, th- they've started the work on the Narrows and the Marin side that we've uh, approved. And then also, um, there was new funding to work with Caltrans and at Marin City for some of the flood control. And uh, a few other locations along the one-on-one corridor, so that was encouraging. And um, they're also starting uh, and reviewing uh, more flood control on thirty-seven and on the, um. On the Marin and Sonoma side. Um, and then there was also discussion about funding for SMART, um, in two of the northern stations that currently are not built out. And how to fund those moving forward, so.
Thanks. And then for me, um, I attend the MCC MC meeting. Uh, I was appointed as an alternate to the Marin County Transit Board. And the other thing also is that I want to say outgoing council members were recognized, um, so Bob was recognized, um. Positive, everything positive. Um, for for all your years of hard work and hard service, so that was a good note. Thanks. Um, with that, if there's nothing else for town council reports, that we have next uh, meeting's agenda, which is November fifteenth. If there's no other business coming for the council, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.